Where is that property?
Dr. Barnes, Director Campbell, Director at Sporn, Director Whitfield, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in forward workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to the, to address the board at that time. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.05, Approval of the Agenda, Is There a Motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated August 11th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second, to approve the agenda as amended. We have a late add of with Agenda Number 5.04, 5.06. So we are going to move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated, approve the modified agenda dated August 11th, 2025. All those in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed five to zero. Agenda Item 3.01, Public Comment. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. We have Brandy. Hey, Brandy, can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Thank you. My name is Brandy Blair. I am a Monroe community member. I do have four children in the school district from elementary through high school currently at the different schools respectively. One's at Sky Valley. I was on the Facility Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to bring up that we were asked to come up with a wish list. So not so much facts of like how palatable is this going to be to the people and things, but just real wish, whatever we could wish for, put it on there. One part that didn't get talked about was the really strong community center idea that people wanted. And we had said that if Sky Valley gets a new building, that the emphasis should be for community use of that as well. What else? One other thing about the location of the new Sky Valley, the downtown locations, they really only gave us those options, A and B. We did bring up a C, which would be to demolish parts of the current Sky Valley that are considered hazardous and, you know, rebuild there because they have an amazing gym. They have an amazing wood shop and some things that people thought were, shouldn't just be demolished. And then also that leaves those other two sites as open space where you could collaborate with the city, do a park or something else. Yeah, I think I just, oh, the one other thing that we didn't, that we didn't really quite make, so the priority list, they first wanted us to do, what's your top priority? And we couldn't agree. So that's why they came out in like a circle because no one thing was supposed to be more important. We're really trying to, we wanted all those things to happen. So maintenance, Sky Valley, early learning, all those things. The other thing that we talked a lot about was the careers for the high schoolers, like getting back to those skilled-based E, I don't remember what it's called right now, but where they learn skills for traits. And that didn't quite make it onto a full number five priority for us, but it was right there. We were kind of told that the high school is going to go that way anyways, so we didn't put it on there. So hopefully I got some of my ideas across of the few other things that didn't quite come out on the slides that Facility Advisory's committee members talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, Agenda Item 4.01, 2526 Budget Hearing. The 2526 budget for the Monroe School District has been completed pending board adoption scheduled for August 25th, 2025. As part of the budget process, we are required by law to advertise and hold a hearing for public review of the proposed annual budget. We will review revenues and expenditures for all of the funds prior to final board adoption, which is scheduled for August 25th, 2025 during our regular board meeting. And welcome to the Monroe School District Board of Directors' public hearing for the 2526 budget. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for you, the Monroe community, to share your input on the draft budget for the 2526 school year. Chief Financial Officer Brenda Hunt will present the budget this evening. Board directors will then have time to ask questions about the draft budget, and then community members will be invited to share their input through public comment. After this evening's public hearing, the board will consider the adoption of the final 2526 budget document at a meeting, at a public meeting on August 25th, 2025. To help guide the proceedings for this budget hearing, we ask that, one, all speakers complete, complete one of the public comment forms, which are available on the back table. Please fill out the form and bring it forward to the board. Two, speakers will be called upon in the order the forms are received. Three, each speaker will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes. Four, each speaker's public comment should be focused on the draft budget. If speakers get off topic, the board will remind them to focus, refocus their comments on the draft budget. Five, speakers desiring more time to present their input to the board are encouraged to submit written statements either tonight or prior to the August 25th meeting. Any information sent to the superintendent or an individual board member will be copied and shared with all board members. Number six, speakers should not be overly repetitive, particularly if a prior speaker has already addressed a subject at great length. Seven, speakers should not make any derogatory or inflammatory comments directed toward any individual. Eight, it is important to the board that all community members have an equal opportunity to be heard and that they are not intimidated by others with differing views. All comments are important to receiving and should be listened to with respect. Again, thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. So another year seems like yesterday when we were adopting the 2425 budget. They're going by fast. So this evening, as President Bumpus mentioned, we are going to go over our proposal for the 2526 budget. As you know, whoops. Okay, we're going to go off that one up there. As you know, our enrollment drives our revenues for the budget. And so our enrollment, our enrollment projections, I presented three ways on the next slide. One is our 2425 budget. That is a year ago. These are the numbers that we projected and used for our 2425 budget. That is that 5,460 FTE that is in the very first column. The projected actual FTE, that is what we're actually being funded for, for 2425. That is that 5,648. It's a difference of 188 FTE. If we're going to be off in our enrollment, this is the best way to be off. And so most of the increase, as we talked about in the hearing, is the increase at our alternative learning experience site, primarily Sky Valley. So 109 FTE of that 188 is at Sky Valley. We had 71 FTE more at the elementary level, 14.5 FTE more at the middle school level, and we lost FTE at the high school level. Running start is a little bit higher. Transition to kindergarten is a little bit lower than what we had anticipated, and we have more in that other category. The fourth category, the fourth column, 2526, is a projected enrollment that we have built our budget on. And so we are continuing with a projection of 35.89 FTE more than what we have currently. We're being very conservative. Again, it's easier to add than it is to subtract after the budget is adopted. And once we have our enrollment numbers, thank you, Jesse, once we have our enrollment numbers, we turn to staffing. And so our staffing numbers, we divide it into our certificated staffing and our classified staffing. So the top portion of this slide represents our certificated MEA staff members. Those are our teachers, our counselors, our psychologists, our sped itinerants, our nurses. Those are our, our teachers that are in the classroom and helping out at the building. It also includes TOSs that are at this building. And then the bottom part is our admin. That's both our building admin, our principals, our assistant principals, and the admin in this building. And so if you were to compare that 2526 budget column to what the certificated amount is on our F-195, and some do compare that number, I have to point out that this number is 12 FTE higher than what is reported on our F-196 because we report our classified administrators on this part as well. So our classified administrators are included in this section, and they're subtracted on the classified sheet. So the classified staff on the F-195 will be 12 less, and this is 12 more, just so we can keep our admin together and present them as a group. Yes, sir.
So could you explain that again? I followed you, but if you could say it again in terms of them being counted and then being taken away. Also, could you define for the FTE?
Okay.
For what qualifies for that?
Yeah, great question. On the summary page of the F-195, it lists our enrollment. And then the next page, it shows the number of staff we have for our actual, for 2324, our projected for 2425, and our budget for 2526. Those numbers, if you look at the certificated number, it is 12 less than what we have on this report because we included 12 classified admin. For example, I'm classified, so it includes me on there so that we have all of our administrative staff in one section of the, of the staffing sheets rather than dividing us in two. Does that make sense? And then for FTE, for the state defines what makes up one classified FTE. One classified FTE is eight hours a day for 260 days or 2,080 hours. That's consistent among all school districts. And so our classified staff, for example, para educator, a typical para educator who is classified, works typically six hours a day for 190 days a year. And so that is less than the 2080. So if you divide that by 2080, you get the .54. So a typical para is a little bit more than half of an FTE. In school districts, we get to define what makes up one FTE in certificated staff. For us, our teachers work eight hours, seven hours a day for 185 days. So that's a total of the 1295. And that equals one FTE for a certificated person. So we get to define that based on our teacher contracts. Does that answer your question, Chuck? Okay, thank you. The next slide is our classified staff. This is broken up in two sections. The top part is our para educators. Those are those people that are out there helping in the classrooms, helping with student safety, helping with crossing guards. Those are the, the, the paras that the buildings rely on every day. And then down below is primarily our PSC, our PSCOPs, which are office professionals. It includes most of the people in my department. It includes people in HR, in communications, that are all classified. It also includes our bus drivers, our maintenance, our custodians, and our grounds people. And so those are the people that make up the bottom section. And again, the total number on the bottom is 12 FTE less than what you would see on the F-195. Okay, next slide, Jesse. So now we're moving on to the revenue comparisons. And so our local taxes, our local taxes are based on what the voters have approved. And 2026 is the last year of our current MNO levy. And so 2026 levy impacts both 2526 fiscal year and 2627 fiscal year. So when we calculate our local taxes, we use the, the fall collection rate of 25 and the, and the spring collection rate of 26 for the first year. And so when you combine those, we get 18,205,534. And that's about a million dollars more than what we anticipate receiving in 2425. Our local non-tax is all of our fines, fees, investment earnings, rentals, like facility use rentals, insurance recoveries, donations. That makes up our local tax. That also is a placeholder for our capacity. We have capacity built into four sections of our revenue, and local non-tax is where we have some of that capacity. Our state general purpose is our apportionment. That's based on our enrollment and the demographics, for example, CTE and sped. And so that is based on our apportionment and our enrollment. The state special purpose is things like our transportation, our state special education, our highly capable, our LAP. Those types of programs are transitional bilingual. Those are all those state special purpose. Those all are monies that come from the state for very specific categorical spending. Next is the federal general purpose. That is our federal timber tax. We don't really have control of that, but that is our federal timber tax. And then the federal special purpose are our limited English, our Title I, Title II, Title III, which is all our disadvantaged, our professional learning, our limited English, our, I'm stalling out all of a sudden. So it's our, our federal programs. It has gone down significantly since the ESAR dollars have left, and we no longer have access to them. Our other is primarily our Monroe Community Coalition Grant, plus capacity is what lives in that other category. Any questions on this slide? James, you look like you might have one.
So it looks like about 3 million in capacity?
No, we were going to get to a slide. Typically, we have 3 million in capacity, but it has been well-proven over the last few years and the number of budget extensions that I've done that 3 million in capacity is no longer adequate for Monroe School District. So for this year, we added 5 million. So we increased it by 2 million to cover those additional revenues, potential additional enrollment. If our enrollment increases, it allows us to buy additional teachers without having to come to the board and saying we need more money. So we added 5 million this year above the historical 3 million.
Okay, so we don't expect the local non-tax to double? That's just because of capacity?
It's because capacity is in there, yes, sir.
And then one thing that Brenda and I met extensively on this, if the revenue doesn't come in, we won't spend the money, so we don't need the capacity.
Yeah, that's always our unvocalized rule that if, if we don't get the revenue, we don't spend it. And if we do spend it, we let the board know. But it just keeps us from having to go through the formal process and do budget extensions. Any other additional questions on revenue?
Sorry, still. So what, if it's not coming from student enrollment, or maybe it is, what would, if, if we do need to use the capacity, what is the reason for this? You know, 7.4% would be the highest percent raise in the last, you know, five years.
Well, yes. The first three columns, the actual numbers are less capacity. The budget revision, as you know, when we did the budget revision for 242425 a month ago, we took out a majority of the capacity, so that lowered that number. The, it was higher.
Okay.
And we lowered it. It still will probably drop a little bit before we get to the, the actual revenues, but it's pretty close to being what it is now. Next year, again, we budget what we actually believe that we're going to get, and then we added 5 million. And so that is the growth. It's 5 million that's, I plug it in in certain places, but it gets moved to where we need it. For example, if I budgeted 500,000 for Title I, and we ended up getting a million, then the capacity would be moved to Title I, and we would be able to spend Title I dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. This is the same information presented on the last slide. However, it's in pie format. Sometimes that resonates better with some folks. But the key elements of this is that great big green area. 75% of our district programs come from state dollars. 4% comes from federal dollars. And our levy from our voters pays for 15% of our, our programs. Next slide, please. Next up is our expenditure comparisons, and I'm presenting this in two ways. The first slide will be based on our programs. And as you can see, we are increasing our revenues by 5.9%. That also includes $5 million of capacity. So that's technically an increase of about 100,000, 1 million, 1.5 million dollars of actual expenditures is what we're expecting. And in this particular, in expenditures, the capacity is all listed under instructional, other instructional services. There is 580,000 that's up there, split between basic ed and special education, but the remainder is down there in other instructional services. It's all in program 79 is where I house our expenditure revenues. Again, if we get capacity in special education, we move it to special education, and it comes out of 79. That's why 79 or other instructional services look so much higher because it is, it is our holding place for a majority of our capacity. Next slide. Again, this is a pictorial view, a graphic view. Basic ed and CTE make up 54% of our expenditures. Special education and categorical programs is the remaining 26%. Next slide. This is the same list of expenditures divided by objects. This is the one that resonates more with most people. It's divided between our certificated staff, our classified staff, benefits, supplies, materials, services, travel, and capital outlay. And in this particular slide, our capacity, 4,420,000 is split between supplies and services, and that 580,000 is split between certificated, classified, and benefits. So I put 580 up there, and the rest is in here as services and, and supplies and materials.
So I guess this is more common for the rest of the board. We've had a lot of discussion about how much of, what was it called, the fund balance we want remaining? I think we had to spend a little bit of it last year. So should we put a little bit more in each year to increase that fund balance for a rainy day or an emergency?
Well, something we talked about doing was updating policy. We never acted on this, but we talked about updating policy. Our minimum fund balance is 7,100. It's a weird number, and it's around 7.1.
It's 5% plus 1,115,000 right now. And that 100, that 1,115,000 was during one process, one budgeting process several years ago where we wanted to buy something, pay for something out of capital, but didn't know if we would have enough left. So we budgeted it in capital and reserved the same amount in cap, in general fund in the event we didn't have enough in capital. But we did, but we never changed our policy.
So our policy needs to be updated because it's, it's not even functional for what it needs to be. And I know that, Sean, we talked with you about this, and I don't know if this was the case in, in previous districts that you've worked in, but I know that it is common practice to do one month's salary. So whatever your salary is for the year, let's call it 8 million dollars for a year here, or something like that. I know that I'm probably not far off on that.
Well, our total expenditures per month, including our, our, our maintenance, our material supplies and operating costs, is roughly 9 million dollars a month.
And so if we were to take that, whatever the payroll cost is, so salaries plus benefits, taxes, all that types of things, or we included that, we say whatever that number is, and we can say we need to be able to cover one month's pay for, for our staff, just in case something happens, things like that, that would up that number to some degree. Because I think our number works out to be around 7 million, something. And so even with that, if something were to happen, heaven forbid, but if something were to happen, we could even cover a month's pay. So it doesn't actually function, our fund balance, to anything really necessary. And even the number that we have is an arbitrary number at this point because it doesn't actually function for the need that it was originally used for. Like that, whatever, the board at the time passed it, it doesn't help us. So I don't know if that means maybe this is a good time. Not today, obviously. I'm not proposing a motion, but to say, hey, as we're walking through updating, updating policies, do we put this in the rotation as well and saying, let's get something that's much more functional for us? And it's at a point in time we can't afford it.
Yeah, so definitely we've been kind of, because this has come up, and Brenda and I have been kind of operating off of that assumption. And Brenda and I have been kind of operating off of that assumption. And it's about seven point, or seven million, seven point three, seven point four. And uh, this budget, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, because you're gonna talk about the fact that we are gonna do something that we haven't done for a while. So I'm not gonna say it. But the um, sorry, we'll come back. Let's, let's Brenda, let's, let's plan on coming back. Um, we can do that in two weeks. We can bring a draft, a policy reading, number one draft policy for new fund balance that um goes along with what you're saying. So, and to answer your question, yeah, the districts that I've been in, the last two have done something right, right on that, trying to make, make sure we have one month's worth of salary. It might also be interesting for you to see context, because um we've, we've made some really phenomenal hires for next year. Because lots of people are getting laid off from other districts because of the financial positions are very different in King and Snoomish County relative to ours. Much lower. A lot of districts says, I think the average is by three, three to three and a half percent. And I think we'll finish next year around.
Um, right now, now we're just gonna have to.
You go ahead.
Right now, um, with our budget revision that we did in June, our ending fund balance was projected to be slightly more than eight percent. Which is where both Superintendent Woodward and me agree that we're comfortable there. However, and I'm sure that you've heard, um, due to some more unexpected expenditures, I will be sitting back here again next meeting, doing a second budget extension for twenty-four, twenty-five. And um, I apologize for that. But that will probably drop us into the seven percent range.
In one piece, and this will come up. And that's not what I was gonna share, but that's okay. It's that was gonna be a phone call, one-on-one with each of you this week, but that's, you know now. I should share the good news. The um, but we'll cover this, because this is, has weighed really heavy on Brenda's heart. So I'll save a phone call. Um, it's just like planning your home budget. It's, it's never perfect. Things come up that you cannot, um, you, you would never guess could happen. And one of our big issues, and it's, it's timely, because um, we're talking about a potential bond effort here. The mitigation fees for Sky Valley um related to the PCB efforts are out of control. And that, we have to do it. And as long as we have kids in that building, we have to comply with what the EPA is telling us to do. We have to make sure kids and staff are safe. So we're doing what we should be doing, but the cost of doing business in that building, the unexpected costs this year were really high. That's one of the primary reasons for the budget extension. So Brenda's done every, the, by far the best CFO I've ever worked with. She had a sleepless weekend, um, I think last weekend or the weekend before worrying about this. And my response was, the board will get it. This, this, we, you cannot predict all of these things. So no, I was gonna say that we were gonna recommend a balanced budget for the first time and.
Yeah, it is balanced, kind of. It's a little bit to the plus, but it's as balanced as we could get it. We worked really hard. And it's as balanced as we could get it. We do have a list. A list of what we would add back in if we had additional revenue. And so we do have a list, which is a good thing to have. Pardon me?
Is your list prioritized as well?
Um, I'm not sure if it's prioritized yet.
And so that.
It will be. As the money comes in, we'll have to prioritize the list.
For sure. And really, it's just, a lot of it is to continue the things that we were able to do, we were able to do this year regarding um school improvement. And as, as James mentioned, we dipped into the fund balance on purpose. We spent some of that down. And then we agreed that we're kind of at a sweet spot now. And so um, we have a list of things that were similar to how we spent dollars this year for, um, and some, it was some enhanced school level funding. Um, and uh, if, you know, we're budgeting pretty conservatively. Our enrollment is, you know, we're budgeting flat, but we will only allocate those dollars again if, if the revenue comes in. But even if it doesn't come in, the adjustments that we've made in behaviors and, and, and practice are such that I think we're gonna sustain this improvement um as, as well.
And we're still looking for places to save throughout the year. We're not, we're not out of that mode yet. We're still going to, with big decisions, still decide and prioritize as we make decisions throughout the year. But our focus this time was a balanced budget that was realistic. And so we are very close. Next slide, please. Um, this is the pie chart for our expenditure. Salary and benefits are eighty-one percent of our budget. And the rest are our material supplies and operating costs, commonly called M-SOCs. Next slide, please. General fund summary. This is where you get to see the overall here. Um, the first call, the first row is where we, for the first three columns, where we actually started our year. And then the very last column is, very last row is where we actually ended. The fourth column over is our twenty-four, twenty-five budget revision. That was following the revision that we did in June. And we projected that we would be at eight point seven percent at the end of twenty-four, twenty-five. And um, we anticipate that at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll be at eight point one percent. It's not because we're spending more, it's because our revenues are higher. So that number is a smaller percentage of the total. And so again, since I spilled the beans, that twenty-four, twenty-five budget revision column is anticipated to change with another budget extension in two weeks. Any questions on this slide?
Do we, this is the one that's presented to the public that we're supposed to prove through resolution the next meeting, but you're gonna have an addendum to that, or is it gonna be a revised resolution?
The resolution that you adopt is on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, even though that says twenty-four, twenty-five up there. It's the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So that will represent the numbers that you see for the general fund, ASB Capital Debt Service and Transportation Vehicle Fund that you see tonight. What's going to change is the twenty-four, twenty-five, the year that we're just ending. So next week, if you choose to adopt both budgets, you'll have two resolutions, one for twenty-four, twenty-five and one for twenty-five, twenty-six. Yes.
I wish we had a calendar year, fiscal year.
Fiscal years are, fiscal years are confusing. I recommend an eight percent fund balance. Because that covers a monthly allocation, plus it covers us in our low months. And so um, and that's about what we're projecting for twenty-five, twenty-six. End of twenty-five, twenty-six is a eight percent. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of that eight point one percent fund balance, because we have certain parts that we have to reserve and restrict. So we are, I'm projecting having about a hundred and fifty thousand in GL eight twenty, which is our restricted for carryover of restricted revenue. What that means is if we get grant money and we don't spend it all, it goes in there. If we get CTE money and we don't spend it all, it goes in there. If we get LAP money and we have carryover, it goes in there. So that is very specific money that we carry over to the following year to be spent on the same very specific expenditures. So that is what that GL is for. The next one is GL eight forty, and that's non-spendable fund balance, inventory and prepaid items. What that means is that because we receive commodities, at the end of the school year, we still have commodities in our warehouse. That's non-perishable food items. And what that means is we have to take an inventory and we have to reserve fund balance to expense those as we use them in the following year. In July and August, we also prepay things for the following year. For example, if there's a conference in October, but they won't take a purchase order and we actually have to pay, then it goes in as a prepaid item so that it gets expensed the following year. And so those prepayments also have to be recorded in GL eight forty at the end of the year. The next is assigned for other purposes. That is under the superintendent's discretion. And those are primarily program carryovers, professional development carryovers, building budget carryovers, um, professional development carryover, stuff like that. Um, historically, we have had things like um, uh, one boiler in there and unexpected maintenance for a hundred thousand each. Those type of things is what makes up what that GL is. Um, the next is unassigned fund balance. That is the portion of the fund balance that isn't in any of the other categories. So that technically is what doesn't have any strings attached. And then last but not least is the one on the very bottom, GL eight ninety-one. And that represents our fund balance policy. Based on the revenue that we're anticipating to receive, that um, five percent plus one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand equates to six point nine million dollars that we have to set aside per our current fund balance policy. Any questions?
So really, in this worst case scenario, we only have uh, the bottom three then? If, if we had to use the paper, everyone's salary or something for a month?
Um, you get to define, the board defines when we do a fund balance policy. How much of this, I mean, do you include all five categories in your fund balance policy? Do you include just eight ninety-one? Say, for example, Jeremiah, throw out a percent, eight, nine? Okay, so if you say eight percent, you have to define as a board, is it eight percent in GL eight ninety-one only? Or is it eight percent collectively amongst all of those areas?
No, I, I get that. I'm saying if, if we, if we had to spend it, we can't spend eight twenty-one, eight forty, or eight eighty-eight, right?
Um, you can spend as a board. You can spend all of it. You would have to change your fund balance policy if we were not keeping that six point nine million in there. But the rest of it, um, well, you can't do the restricted, eight twenty-one. The top one has to stay there, but the rest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, next slide, please. So of notable incident, we added two assistant principals at the elementary building in this, in this budget. So that what that means is that every elementary has a principal, an assistant principal and the middle school. As you recall from a past board meeting, we reduced our eight-period day to a six-period day at the high school, which allowed us to um, make other adjustments in staffing. And the capacity increased from five, uh, to five million from three million. Those are the big changes in this year's budget. Next slide, please. Thank you, Jesse. M-SOC disclosure, um, material supplies and operating costs. They made this a requirement to present at a, at the budget hearing now. And um, Sean has to sign it when the budget is adopted. But essentially, the first section tells you as a board, how much our apportionment is driving in non-employee costs. How much revenue we get for um, M-SOCs. And then the bottom section is how we're spending it in program, zero, one, zero, two, and ninety-seven. And so as long as that number is equal to or more than what we receive, we are fine. If we ever used M-SOC money on staff, then we have to disclose it to the state. So ours is, um, we're still spending more in M-SOCs than what we receive. So technically, that's a good thing according to the state. We're not underspending our M-SOCs. And so again, I'm required to disclose this at board meetings now. This is like the third year that they've made a, a requirement. So you're becoming familiar with it. Next slide. Now, we're gonna go through all the other funds. Capital projects is first. It reflects the beginning fund balances, the expected revenues, the expenditures and the, and the year-end fund balance. I will tell you that capital projects basically has mitigation dollars in it. It has some um, investment earnings left. But essentially, the capital projects fund is, um, until we have growth that's reflected in our capital facilities plan, we really have very limited resources in the capital projects fund to spend now. Because it's technically all mitigation fees. But I put money in this budget so that it's capacity in capital projects. But until we either have a bond or a capital levy, then, or really big growth that we amend our capital facilities plan for, then we don't have access to these resources right now. Next slide, please. Next is the debt service fund. The debt service fund is used to pay off our principal and interest on the bonds that we passed in fifteen. And um, our beginning fund balance is projected to be five million, five hundred and forty-four thousand at the beginning of twenty-five, twenty-six. We're going to get approximately seven point seven million dollars in revenue. That is levied when we pass the budget, meaning that's when you approve that amount. And then we're spending eight point two million on principal and interest payments for twenty-five, twenty-six, which leaves us with our fund balance of four point nine. Right now, every five years, we have an arbitrage specialist come in and make sure that our fund balance is dropping low enough in our debt service fund. And he'll let us know. He does that every five years. Um, and essentially, they don't want us to get interest, more interest on the money than the interest that we got with selling the bonds. Um, so our projected rate per thousand on what we levied for debt service is sixty-five cents per thousand for next year. And if a bond were to pass, then that amount would be combined with the amount that we are currently paying. Does that make sense? Okay, next slide, please. Transportation vehicle fund. The transportation vehicle fund, the primary source of revenue in the transportation vehicle fund is the depreciation dollars that we get in July. And so we combine the depreciation dollars that we get in July with our fund balance. And I budget as much as I can possibly budget to be comfortable with the ending fund balance, to allow the board to make a decision um, regarding how many buses we can buy that year. So I put as much capacity in there that drives my comfort level for the ending fund balance. And um, any offset for the revenues, because the revenues is a guess. So, but I, I go with comfort level and I budgeted one point seven million dollars for expenditures in transportation, which is quite a few buses. Next slide, please. Yes.
So this uh, the way I'm looking at this, so the state bus depreciation revenue. So do we receive revenue based on how old our buses are getting and the need to replace them at some point in the future? Like we have a ten-year-old bus, so we have two years left, which is not right. Uh, and we get seventy-five thousand dollars for that. So is that the depreciation or?
The depreciation scale at um, OSPI, um, as soon as you buy a bus, it goes on the schedule. And it's at its highest value when it's a brand-new bus. And then every year, that value per bus goes down. And eventually, the buses fall off the depreciation scale. So um, the district is better financially if we sell the older buses and buy newer buses so that we continue to get revenue. And um, when the buses are really old, we no longer get depreciation revenue. And the cost to maintain them go up. So the, the push from OSPI and from taxpayers is that um, as the buses get old, it saves the district money, it saves the taxpayers' money in the form of a levy if we replace the budget, the, the buses as they fall off the depreciation schedule. And I believe we still have several that are not, no longer on the depreciation schedule.
At this current rate, um, how many years is it gonna take to get all the buses on the depreciation schedule?
That would have to be a question that I would have to talk with Mike about.
Okay.
Yeah, but I could talk with him and let you know next time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is the ASB. The ASB is a great work of art and a great exercise that our kids at all levels do at their buildings. The ASB budgets are, are, the high school does theirs, the kids have their, their meetings and they decide on um, what their fundraising are gonna be, how much money they're going to receive, and then how they're going to spend it. Middle level does the same, elementary does the same. And getting through these budgets in May is always kind of fun. And so they do their best work. We respect their work. We present the budget as they present it with minor tweaks. It has to be, sometimes they have to put transfers in there and the transfers in and out have to balance. And so we have to work with the buildings to get their budgets to be in a presentable format. Sometimes we have to ask questions about their intent. But most of the time, the budgets are perfect, just, just the way they are. And so, next slide, please. This shows you by building what um, the buildings have budgeted. And they do their own projections for the beginning fund balance. They do their own projections for their revenues, their expenditures, and their ending fund balance. And so the one that caught my eye when I was doing this is, um, Malpe didn't budget to spend any money. But I guess they have a um, everything goes through the PTO at Malpe. I didn't know. Who would have known? So um, they're not really using that. So I asked, what about the future of that fourteen thousand that's in there? Ultimately, they should think about spending some of that, but they're thinking about it. But it's always a, uh, an adventure. Um, the board is responsible for this money, so we present it to the board. But it is a um, example of the leadership at all of the buildings. Student leadership.
And that's great. I just had a curiosity, why did it nearly double this year? Was I mainly at the high school or was there a big trip or just a bunch of little things?
Well, the high school's budget has gone up a lot. And again, they are um, a new group of students, a new student body working with the old. And they have high expectations for themselves.
That's awesome.
Yes, it is. So again, um, we don't question, except for the legal things.
Brenda, should I question the legal? You know, the amount of money for the student body is just, blows me away. It's almost one point five million dollars that go through the student budgets. So does it, the high school? High school's one point one million. And the kids, these kids, our kids budget all this with the fundraising and then the expenses. And I know there's checks and balances in terms of the work that you do, that, that they're uh, that they're called for and such. But it still blows me away that a high school student body, I think of my age back then, and having that amount of money to try to figure out how that's, that's allocated. In fact, it's kind of a rhetorical question, but perhaps we could have the high school ASB present, make a budget presentation and explain how the money is spent, how it's raised. And it would be, I think it'd be good for me to know, you know, types of the responsibilities they have.
I think that's a great idea. I can work with the high school and get some brave souls to come over here and talk with the board. It's, it's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
We gotta see some pictures of these dances. I mean, they have limos for every student or something? What's going on?
You know that they're probably not going to spend that much or make that much, right? It's just, it, they have big visions. You know, it's big visions. So this gives them capacity to spend it if they get unexpected revenue. They're not allowed to overspend, so we do keep an eye on, on that. Any other questions? Next slide. It's how you reach me, my email and my phone number.
Awesome. Great job and a balanced budget. Nice job. Well done.
Yeah, we're adding a little over four thousand. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Brenda. We appreciate all of your hard work with that. Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero-two, new policy thirty-four twenty. Uh, let's see, and we have David Perator here to help present. Anaphylaxis prevention and response, and this is the first reading.
And thank you. And this is a pretty quick one. We already have Board Policy thirty-four twenty, which was um, around for um, our students with life-threatening allergies such as um, to bee stings or to peanut allergies. And just requirements for staff um, training and, and um, sharing of information as well as parent responsibilities to making sure that they have appropriate um, doctor's orders for the medications as well as um, to be able to attend any, any school activity um, that life-threatening or that life-saving like epinephrine is onsite. Otherwise, the student is, would be required to be excluded. This is a, the, the change for this policy is just an addition. It's a, in addition to, the top part of the policy is um, virtually unchanged. The bottom part is um, we're now in, in Washington able to stock uh, epinephrine. That's not assigned to a direct student. So um, working through the health department, um, there's a standing order that doctors prescribe on the medications for schools. So um, we went out and got donated for, for free epinephrine for um, all of our elementary, all, all of our, our school sites. This addition allows then our nurses to um, to train and delegate other people. So if, for example, if a student had an undiagnosed um, allergy, um, they're able to use, um, they're, they have that um, life-threat, life, life-saving um, medication onsite. Um, and so that just um, for the provisions. And this also would be um, working with TUI at the high school level, um, potentially having, you know, for athletic events, um, where they're out. You know, um, where the, the trainer would be able to have a do- a dose that the, the nurse would um, delegate to them for those activities. This just allows, we've received the donation. Um, but before um, bringing it out to our schools to begin the school year, wanted to make sure we had the updated policy that similar to, um, we have Narcan at, at our sites for um, um, opiate, um, potential opiate overdoses. Um, this allows our nurses and our staff, if they do have to use um, this, um, it's a hold harmless to good Samaritan law. And so just wanted to make sure that we got this um, addition.
I got a question. So from what I recall, these EpiPens, they don't last very long, like a year or so. So who's responsible for checking the expiration date and notifying the parents that they need to bring in a new one or something like that?
That would be our school nurses. And each year, um, families, the last day of school, families need to pick up the epinephrine from the school uh, beginning of the year process. And I sent a um, couple of weeks ago, a, 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 a letter out to all of our families that have life-threatening um, care plans, just about some of the different requirements. And so they do need every year to get updated doctor's orders as well as to ensure that those um, that, that what we have onsite is, is not um, expired. But our, our nurses do a great job of managing that and working with the individual families. So this is just a, again, this gives some additional support and kind of protections for, for all of our students.
Sounds good. Thank you, David.
I had a question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, I guess I, I have a concern with the idea. I know EpiPens, we can get it prescribed for the school to use or typically prescribed for an individual. And I know that we have a good Samaritan law, so if something happens and a staff member injects a kid with an EpiPen, they didn't need it, but there's possi- there's side effects. It's generally safe, but there's side effects, blood pressure issues and things like that. So what happens when that happens? Uh, and we have an issue with that of a staff member gets overzealous and they're freaking out because a kid is having an episode and they think that they need it and they go up and stab the kid in the leg with it. They didn't actually need it. And now there's an issue and a possible lawsuit on our hands. And yes, there's the good Samaritan law, but I just look at the worst-case scenario. Do we put ourselves into a difficult situation?
I'd say, well, with, with the, the legal backing, I'd, I'd say we're in a good legal standing there. Um, you know, some of the procedures also is anytime you use an Epi- an EpiPen is um, administered, the process is then you, you call nine-one-one immediately. Um, and so there could be some risks there, but I, I would say that would be pretty minimal. But haven't, haven't had that experience. So the, the in the time that I've been leading health services, I think we, our nurses have only needed to administer EpiPens probably you could count the times um, on one hand. And so, and, and that's with students that have the diagnosed um, conditions.
Thank you, David.
I'm sorry, you mentioned we got a grant to provide the?
Um, it, it wasn't a grant. It was just um, an organization has it, has it available for schools. So you put in your order to, to that um, that company and then they very slowly get it to you. I put the order in last, I believe it was September, and we received our EpiPens. Um, I believe it was the week after school got out.
And we expect this to still be there for years to come or?
Yeah, and it'll, it'll be then just, I, I will be, you know, refreshing that order as, as those um, stock EpiPens expire.
And if that service stops, will we have to update this policy then or would we cross that bridge when we get there?
Well, we wouldn't have to update the policy because this just allows for, if you are stocking the epinephrine, uh, the situation and the conditions for our families that already have, that do have a diagnosed life-threatening condition, they are still under the same requirements with that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, David. Just a reminder, that was the first reading too. Okay, moving on to agenda item four point zero-three. We have policy twenty twenty, course design selection and adoption of instructional materials. This is the second reading. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy twenty twenty, course design selection and adoption of instructional materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy twenty twenty, course design selection and adoption of instructional materials. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item four point zero-four, policy twenty twenty-nine, animals as part of the instructional program. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy twenty twenty-nine, animals as part of the instructional program.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. The theme Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy twenty twenty-nine, animals as part of the instructional program. All in favor, raise your hand. Um, discussion?
Well, it's a, a motion and a second, and it's open for discussion. I was just gonna add my two cents in about something that's very familiar with me. Farming in the army probably had the most significant impact in my life. And one of the things with raising animals, it is you know, the care, putting into animals, uh, and the work I learned a great deal from. And if it was possible to have animals in classes more often, so instead of having a popcorn party, have, have sheep or cows come into the place, I, I think that would be a blast. I, I have been around animals my whole life. I mean, people have think dogs and cats are wonderful. You haven't seen a little calf or a little lamb. And the other part of this is that, you know, it talks about the hygiene. You know, I raised, I, I delivered sheep, pigs, uh, dealt with Angus, Hereford cattle. I don't remember ever washing my hands after dealing with those animals. Uh, you know, if my mom made me wash my hands before dinner, I might do it. But I, I was thinking back, I don't think I ever washed my hands. And here we have a policy about kids ensuring that they're safe from washing their hands. So this is uh, no, uh, I'm not making any recommendation for uh, amendments where I'm not opposed to it. I just want to put those real-life facets into discussion.
We appreciate a good hand-washing check. Okay. All in favor that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy twenty twenty-nine, animals as part of the instructional program? Raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Please wash your hands, people. Lesson learned. Okay, agenda item five point twelve, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has fa- passed by to zero. Moving on to agenda item six point zero-one, superintendent update.
All right, so I have something really cool to celebrate this evening. Excuse me. So uh, Park Place Middle School is, has been designated a two thousand twenty-five Washington School on the rise, which is awesome. Um, I just received a, a letter, and I'm just gonna go ahead and read the entire le- letter. Dear Superintendent Woodward and Principal Hilson, on behalf of the Association of Washington School Principals and the Association of Washington Student Leaders, it's our honor to recognize Park Place Middle School as a twenty twenty-five Washington School on the rise. Park Place stands as a powerful example of what's possible and student belonging, voice, and leadership are deeply embedded in school culture. When a vision rooted in equity and a commitment to data-driven improvement, Park Place Middle School has built a community where every student feels valued, heard, and empowered to thrive. Your intentional use of panorama survey data to guide change is impressive and the results are undeniable. From thirty-five percent to fifty-five percent of students reporting a strong sense of belonging with no gaps among student groups, your progress is as inclusive as it is inspiring. The innovative work happening at Park Place from enrichment days to student-led leadership campaigns proves that schools can be joyful, responsive, and academically successful when students are at the center. Programs like ASB-led surveys, web sources of strength, and your leadership class have created authentic opportunities for student voice, choice, and con- connection. You've cultivated a place where leadership is not reserved for a few but shared across your student body. The result is a thriving learning community driven by student ownership and adult partnership. Park Place Middle School is not only on the rise, it's setting the pace. We look forward to presenting your banner soon and celebrating the outstanding work of your staff, students, and, and.
and celebrating the outstanding work of your staff, students and and leadership team. So that is fantastic and well deserved by Park Place. The cool thing is it's always nice to get words like this, and there are some tangible things that needed to be accomplished for them to be identified as a school on the rise. Coincidentally, we have also been putting together, and James, you'll love this because you've asked for something like this. For for each one of our schools, we have a strategic plan scorecard with all of their data the last four years in our big areas, you know, attendance, belonging, growth and achievement in ELA and mathematics. Park Place in almost every area has significant growth over over the four year period. So words are nice. We have data that is in alignment with what is being asserted by by this organization. That the cool thing that's kind of deceiving, you know, let's just take student belonging. Oh, and by the way, at our workshop where the schools present their school improvement plans and we share district data from last year, we'll have a binder for each of you for each one of our schools and then our district data as well. And you're going to be very impressed with the progress of of staff. But with that said, you might, let's just take a look at belonging, which we've been tracking for the last several years now. 55% of the students at Park Place have a positive sense of belonging. The first question you'd ask is, that's great, but we'd sure like the other 45% to to be, you know, the on the same level as the other kids. If you look at the national data on middle schools and you compare our data with the national set of data, we are in the 80th percentile at Park Place Middle School. So to so we're outperforming 79% of the schools in that data set. That's a very large data set nationwide. We have a long ways to go because we'd like 100% of our students to feel that way, but 38% to 55% over two two years does not happen by accident. So if you see Christie or Tanya or the teachers and other staff at the school, please let them know that you you see them and you appreciate the work that that's going on and the real tangible results. So really proud of proud of their efforts. And realistically, we don't have the time for it, but every school has a story like this. And so we have a lot of of great things to celebrate there. We will welcome our staff back on, let's see, August 25th is our district's all staff kickoff. You're welcome. I think most of you attended last year. You'll be happy to know my keynote, it's been shortened significantly. We're bringing in a real expert this year. But it's it's for all staff, certificate of staff are required to come. Classified staff, it's it's will be year two that they they're all invited as well, and they really appreciated that. And they get paid to attend as well. Breakfast will start at 7:30 and I'll I'll send y'all some reminders. At the very least, if you want to come, you can stay for 10 minutes. We'll introduce you and 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 you can move about your day. Tui and JJ from the high school will be getting the kids to welcome the staff like last year. If you recall, the cheerleaders were out. We had the drum line going and and that was that was really cool. So yeah, we're looking forward to kicking off the year. I know it's only beginning of August, but it's like go time, right? And and we're excited to get the get our students and staff back.
Yeah. How has the how's going from the eight period day to the sixth period day been working out for the high school?
Yeah, so so so, you know, it's interesting. So we had our leadership retreat last week, and this is one of our topics that we talked about. And it's going really well. I think once the bandage was ripped off and it was a lot of gnashing of teeth and difficult for people because it's about a 50 50 feeling among staff as to which way is the best way to go. But, you know, and we did that plenty early enough so people could get used to their their new normal. Brett and his team have plans to provide professional development as teachers come back because it's kind of interesting. There's a decent percentage of staff that have never taught in a traditional six six period day with a shorter amount of time. So they have a series of trainings for staff to make sure they're feeling good about ma- making this shift. And I I with the the angst and the anxiousness of of the decision and there is some month where people were just like, oh, my goodness, I I don't know how we're gonna do this. People have been really professional. They've moved on. They're they're getting prepared and they'll they'll be ready to go. But there's another piece too that I should I forgot to mention. So and James, you asked me about this at our last meeting after the meeting in regards to our cell phone policy. So this will be year two. You dubbed did the survey for us and along with a set of recommendations, there probably one of the stronger recommendations they made is to hit the reset button with staff and make sure that staff understands that the policy is non negotiable because the kids mentioned that at 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 some of our schools that it was sort of teacher dependent, right? Like gum chewing or it used to be hat wearing, but I think that's people can wear hats everywhere. And I'm surprised you guys don't have hats on here. But with that said, I talked to our principals last week and they're ready to go into and review the policy and just explain to them th- this isn't negotiable. That's one of the reasons why our principals like the fact that it's a board policy versus at the individual discretion of the school. So there we will strongly let our our staff know that this this is a this is a have to. So so that was that was not a big aha, but it's nice to have the data from staff, students, families that that it wasn't as consistent as it could be towards the end of the year. Started strong and it kind of fell off. So we'll get on that at the beginning of the year as well.
Sorry, did you already send out this data or can you share that data?
Oh, yeah, I'll I'll send you the data. Yeah.
And then also regarding the sixth day period day, you know, I know we talked about this, but there was a plan to open up more summer school and you mentioned that that would even start this summer, like I mean, we don't have to do it now, but we have somewhere you like, how many students actually participate in that? And then what's the plan for next summers? Then we can kind of compare as time goes on, if more and more students are taking advantage of it to catch up or whatever needs.
Yeah, you bet. I see Darby back there. So we'll at our next meeting, we'll remember to put that on the agenda. We'll give you all the stats related to our summer school.
Okay, agenda item 7.01, board reports and or comments.
Director Byrne. Okay, mine, since we're not gonna have another board meeting until the 25th, I just wanted to remind the community about our resource fair on August 20th from 4 to 6 p.m. at Park Place Middle School. Our resource fair every year is absolutely incredible for our students. We partner with so many different organizations in the community from Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue for bike helmets to community transit for Orca cards. You've got Monroe Library, Oxbow Farms, Cocoon House, Sky Comish Valley Indian Education, Latino Education, Training Institute, Monroe Community Coalition. There's 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, City of Monroe, Food Bank Information from Sky Valley Food Bank. You've got glasses, cases, cleaner, contact lenses, eyeglass repair booth, all sorts of information about affordable eye care. Monroe Vision and also Walmart Vision Center and of course, Big Heart, Big Smile. They do so much. Costco this year has even given us $500 gift card for school supplies and 200 backpacks. We also have another private donor that has come in and literally taken our school supply list and said, I'm gonna fill 100 backpacks based on this school supply list so that we can provide it to students. So I am just thrilled. My community, our community never ceases to amaze me with its generosity and what it is capable of to ensure that our students are ready to go for the first day of school when they walk through that door, ready to learn and do the best that they can do in the school year. So just a huge thank you to all of them and reminder to the rest of the community, 4 to 6 p.m., Park Place Middle School. I will definitely be there. And I'm looking forward to seeing so many awesome people from our community.
It's good segue in that as well. Getting excited for the school year start. I don't know that my kids would say the same right now. They want to enjoy all the summer they can, but I know that also Maltby Food Bank and then Provide Hope Food Rescue both are doing a school supply drive as well. And we had over 100 backpacks donated that are gonna get split between those, plus lots of other school supplies that are still coming in. So lots of families as they need, let's just get to think of something really cool. I don't know if Walmart is doing this. We went to Fred Meyer the other day and they have a QR code that you can scan and select your school and it pulls up all of our information as well. And so you can go right to your school and get that information for families that are going that direction as well. Whatever we can do to get those materials ready for our kids to start off the year and start off really well. And I will not be at our next board meeting, so please take care of everything without me. I'm sure you guys will be fine. But I am excited for seeing our school year start off really strong. And a lot of the I love that. I feel like the last maybe three beginnings of the school year, we have just had amazing momentum that has capitalized on top each year. I feel like we're just moving the needle with our students and our staff in the right direction, which feels really good. We still have a long way to go in a lot of things and nobody's denying that. But I love the direction that our district is going and it just really makes me really encouraged. I've also just really just enjoyed our summer months. I just have felt like we've gotten I I I tell my wife, I call my boring school board meetings because we just get work done. And I don't mean they're actually boring, but I just feel like we've been able to actually dig into a lot of the data policy things and take care of the things that that's what we were elected to do. And and I've really appreciated that. And this last, I think, calendar year from some end of summer last year to the end of summer this year, just the work that we've done of and it's not a pat on our back. It's just I'm really excited to see the direction we're going. And it makes me really excited for the year coming up. So, yeah.
Go ahead.
President Bumpus, what am I gonna be talking about?
Washing our hands.
Close. It's behavior. So I had a a couple of months ago, no, it's about a month ago, I attended my 50th high school graduation. And I was thinking about about a month before, we handed out diplomas to the class and then fifth, fast forward 50 years. And here I am celebrating with my classmates. And so to tie this into my earlier remarks about farms, it's funny that a lot of the behavior and the personalities of of people that you went to school with are a lot the same. If there's kidders and there's, you know, people that laugh and and such. And but what it really came down to was, you know, they have their careers. Some people have died. Had about a dozen people die. But reminiscing going through the yearbook and it it just coming down to to family, friends, kids, grandkids and relationships. So full circle. So for my 75th anniversary, you know, reunion that that might have fewer people, but I plan to be there. So my behavior is based on how I was in high school 50 years ago. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. That's how I am.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, friendly reminder, Fair Days Parade downtown Monroe, August 23rd, 11 a.m. Lots of students there, lots of our MSD groups. Excited every year to attend that parade. And then I just wanted to shout out Sean, you, to your point, you have been only, you've only been here a couple of years. And I just, how cool is it that we have a strategic plan and we're talking facilities now? And so just super thankful for a lot of the work that you've done. Holly always doing the, I mean, you're the best. And so I just really appreciate all the work that you've done. And I think it's had a really positive and energizing impact in our school district and with our staff. And so just excited, I think I was just talking to James earlier today when I arrived and I said, you know, this board, a lot of the members of this board have been through lots of moments together and and we've come out stronger at the end, but I think that it's so exciting to now be headed into such a positive, exciting community and you're leading, great work. So I appreciate you. We appreciate you. But yeah, so thank you. And it is 6:26 p.m. Tonight's meeting is adjourned.